Right. It was very tasty.
Hello.
Hello, Kevin?
Hello.
How abouts are you? What? Still stuck in traffic?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'm in Louisville. I just, uh, I tried to call you, but it didn't go through, I guess.
Hmm. Well, I didn't see it. I thought we called you. We haven't been on yet.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna put your, I'm gonna put the speakerphone muted. I'm gonna try to pull up the live stream on, on the thing, so.
Okay.
But I'll keep you on speaker here.
All right, we got you. I guess these are on, it's ready to go.
Stacy.
We're still getting the bugs out of everything. How are you? Good, good, good.
Okay, now we're ready. Now we're ready.
So, uh. We're ready to go?
Yep.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to Scottsburg City Council, uh, of, uh, for the night. We're getting at six things. We're in a whole new location. Everything's all new. And, uh, we've moved, probably, uh, a huge move for us. So, well, welcome to the new Scottsburg City Hall. And, uh, we'll begin by, uh, what we, how we usually do, calling our, uh, meeting to order at, uh, six o'clock or maybe a couple of minutes behind. So, uh, we begin with prayer and the pledge of allegiance. So, the flag today is over here, not right behind me, for sure. So, if you, if you'd like to stand, please do, do so, and I'll pray and we'll say the pledge of allegiance. Father, we just come before you to thank you for the day you've given unto us, this twenty-seventh day of October two thousand and twenty-five. We'll never see it again, so we thank you, Father, for the opportunity to walk the pilgrimage of life today. Father, thank you for all that is here, and thank you for Scottsburg and Scott County and, and Washington County and the counties around us, Father. And just the joy we have in each other and in you, Father. We thank you for this new facility that you've allowed us to come to so that we were able to help our entire county in doing this. We love you and we praise you, be with us, we ask you, Jesus, then we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Amen. Thank you, Lord, for America. Well, welcome to a new, uh, new facility here. I hope you enjoy, and, uh, it's, it's been a while in coming, and I'll tell you at the very end how we got out here, but, but for right now, we're going to go forward with our agenda. And the next thing on our agenda is the roll call by our clerk treasurer, Jan Hardy.
Mayor Amick?
Here.
Tim Hall?
Here.
Rick Cozart?
Here.
Kevin Smallwood?
Here.
Got Kevin on speakerphone.
Okay. Uh, Richie Barton?
Here.
Mark Nicholson?
Here.
All accounted for, so let me go down. The next thing is the public comment period. The city of Scottsburg, uh, council will accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and to state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. So, does anybody this evening have anything they would like to say to council or ask council? Okay, going once, going twice, we'll go forward, we'll close the meeting, go down to, into new business for the council. The first thing on our agenda this evening is the third reading of orders twenty twenty-five dash sixteen and ordinance regulating the oversight and management of storm. Oh, I'm sorry. And, oh, yeah, missed approval of minutes. Sorry about that. Let's just stop that, we'll go back to approval of minutes, uh, on the September twenty-second, twenty-five minutes. Meet the last meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Rick makes the motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Richie seconds that, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Did Kevin say anything? Still there, Kevin?
Yes, aye.
Okay, so sounds unanimous, so, okay, public comment, uh, public comments. The, the approval of minutes passes on unanimous, so let's go down to new business on third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen and ordinance regulating the oversight and management of storm water within the city of Scottsburg. We have a motion to pass on third reading, please.
I'll make the motion to pass it.
Rick makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mark seconds, any questions about this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can they vote, Josh, since there's rates in this? Can they vote via, so it's?
No, I sent that memo random. It's third reading, so it's final action, so no.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, they can't.
It's three-one.
So, it can just be a three-one vote?
Yeah.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen passes on third and final reading. Uh, next, we have second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty and ordinance of the common council of the city of Scottsburg, Indiana amending an ordinance twenty twenty-one dash four and ordinance establishing in, a new non-reverting fund for training initiatives at the Mid-America Science Park.
Yes, that was the, what we presented last time, this is the second reading, and as explained at that time, we are just asking to amend, since our direction has gone different out here than training, uh, that the original ordinance be amended to read as is written in this ordinance.
We have a motion to pass on second reading.
I'll make the motion.
Richie makes the motions, is there a second?
I'll second.
Rick seconds that, any questions about this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
All opposed?
That's fine.
So, so ten, ten, okay. So, passes on second reading. Go forward.
We got the, what, do you remember what the vote was for the first reading, John? I have to have unanimous on the first reading, right?
Yeah, it was unanimous.
Yes.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Our President Rich, Richie Barton makes the motion to go forward and, and suspend the rules, uh, and pass on third and final reading, is there a second?
I'll second.
Rick seconds that, any questions, comments?
And just declare, it only has to be unanimous if you're going to pass it all in one night.
In one night, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Josh.
You're welcome. So, we have a motion to second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, sounds unanimous there. Okay, then let's go forward, and we have a motion to pass on third and final reading, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty.
I'll make the motion.
Richie makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Rick seconds that. Any questions here? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All right. Okay. Second read, uh, third and final reading of twenty twenty-five dash twenty passes on second and third reading. The next is second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one and ordinance amending the twenty twenty-five seller ordinance of the city of Scottsburg, Indiana. We have a motion to pass this on second reading.
I'll make the motion.
Rick makes the motion to pass orders twenty twenty-one, twenty-five on twenty twenty-five, uh, twenty-one on second reading, is there, is there a second? Is there a second motion?
I'll se, I'll second it.
Richie seconds that, any questions, comments? Yeah, if not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All against it? Passes unanimously. Do you want a second, third?
We'll go ahead and, they've got their second reading, I'll go ahead and suspend the rules for third reading.
We're asking to suspend rules on third reading, is there a motion? Uh, second, second, uh, Richie made the motion, is there a second to this?
I'll second.
Mark seconds that, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppo? Opposed? Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one passes on second and third final reading.
That's suspended rules, now we need a motion, now we need a motion for. Yeah, you're getting ahead of yourself, now we just need a motion for the ordinance twenty twenty-five one.
Right. So, we need an ordinance for, on third reading of twenty twenty-five twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mark makes the motion, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Rick seconds, any questions now on third reading? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, sounds, uh, so, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-one passes on second and third final reading. Now, we're going down to the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-four and ordinance annexing a contiguous, contiguous territory into the city of Scottsburg. Do you all know where that's at? Do you have any confusion where this is at?
No.
It's not, I don't think so. So, do you, Kevin, you know where that property's at? Old Dor, the old Doris Bond.
Yeah, I know where it's at.
Yeah. Okay, so everybody knows, uh, we have a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash tw- twenty-four, in annexing that contiguous, that, that property there.
For the public, did you establish where the property is?
Just a second. It's the old bond, say it's property at corner, where you turn to go to the golf course, just to the west of it.
And they have submitted a, a petition to voluntarily request annexation, so it's, it's at their request. So, uh, under statute, we have to have a public hearing, um, before it can be finalized, so today is just the first reading, and at the, uh, labor council meeting, there'll be a second reading with a public hearing.
Yeah, tonight, James, just to get it started, that's all, yeah. But it's right there, that little property right at the corner of the golf course, West Stavea Boulevard, right there. I'll make a motion to annex it.
I'll second it.
You have a motion by Richie Barton, second, or by Rick Cozart? Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, passes on first reading. Uh, James, that's also basically, you, we have the city line still going further to the west, so it's just how it got from this, I don't know. The city owned the golf course a long time, so it was in the city.
That's all we can do, because we can have a public hearing.
Oh, that's right. Okay, what announcements do we have for today? Mr. President?
I don't have anything.
Okay, well.
We've got Halloween coming up, but that's.
When is that? Friday?
Friday.
Friday night, so basically, um, the city won't be out there this year, so just to let you know. But all of what we've done will, will imitate this year as it did in years past. So, I've talked with our chief Harden, that we're going to have those same roads shut down, that we've shut down in the past, is that correct, chief? So, street department will close certain areas, I think we closed the, uh, first street going south. I think there's been, uh, closure of Main Street right off of Highway fifty-six, so there's several places, because there's just a lot of folks coming in there. We have just been inundated here by moving and getting set up and, and getting bumpy, uh, out of everything, but it's gonna be a very positive thing, so for the county and the city both. So, uh, so, yes, everybody have a great, uh, Halloween, uh, with the kids, and, uh, enjoying them, being excited about getting a whole bunch of candy. And, uh, you know, I'll miss it, I've always enjoyed that, because they come in, in a fast flow. Um, while we're here, does any of you have any questions about our facility here, or anything else like that, or why we're here? Do you know, do you know why we're here? Well, basically, the judge began by needing a third courtroom, and he basically, circuit judge. Yeah, and, and, uh, and basically said that, that if you, we need more room, so in other words, I want the entire courthouse. If you're, have anything to do with judicial, you stay. The clerk treasurer, the clerk, not the treasurer, the clerk has, uh, connections there, so the clerk's gonna stay, but probation will stay and the judges will stay. But everybody else had to move, so they, they got close on building a, a facility that was going to raise everybody's taxes up, so, or they could come right across the street to city hall and buy that. So, we've been there probably sixty years or so, so it was a hard thing to leave, uh, you know, human beings don't like change, so, but it was the best thing for Scottsburg, so now you will not have any type of rate increase due to the city of Scottsburg, because we allowed them to go forward and buy it. Uh, they, they paid six hundred thousand dollars for it, they had the cash to pay that. So, so anyways, that's, that's why we did what we did. And, uh, we've come out here and we've renovated, we've renovated this, this was pretty well all, but this, this is all new here for you to see. I'm sorry. Well, when I was saying it would have anything in here, it's probably an event center. So, this is, this is gonna be council chambers, and, and, uh, so I'm not sure what we will, what we would do in that case, but, uh, uh, but we do have areas, we have an event room one, and we have an event room two now. So, they're both about the same size and both usable, so we have a lot of area for them. Did room number? Yeah. No, it doesn't have wall, yeah, so, yeah, yes, it is, so, um. What else did I need to tell you? Oh, we're gonna have an open house here, so, uh, we'll put a date out there, we're gonna get with, uh, Josh is getting with the county's attorney as well, and a date will be set, where we're going to have, invite council, invite, you know, folks to come up and see, this is a historic event, for us to be leaving city hall and the, and the, and county changing areas as well. So, it's gonna be a huge event, so we want everybody to come and enjoy, and, uh, things going forward. Do you have a date on that? We, we're gonna, we're gonna get a date for you, so we'll, we'll post that. So, any other questions? This council have anything else?
Yeah, uh, I have a few announcements real quick.
Okay.
I'm gonna thank the city of Scottsburg Police, the staff for moving everything out here, they did a great job. I wanna thank Janet Hardy, she took me out Friday, I got, said a few things, and they're very impressive. Uh, people starting to notice the new street signs, and they're very popular so far, and I wanna thank the park department for the new playground equipment at Beachwood, we had a birthday party dinner for my grandson, and they gave it a big thumbs up. The new piece, so.
I tell you, that, and, and I wanna back Rick as well, because I mean, I, thank you, thank you, thank you for all of our employees, we had a, an employee appreciation dinner, uh, Jill got all that going, and, and we had almost all of our entire force down there that was not on duty, and, uh, and also, everybody just had a wonderful time, but, uh, we closed down on a Friday and, and opened back up on Wednesday the first. So, uh, you know, we had basically pretty well all hands on deck, moving things, getting them in, inside, packing them up, getting them out here, getting them back inside here, trying to get them all put back up, and, and we had such a way that the guys were able to do it at times, just taking things out and putting exactly back the way they had. So, it's been a long, hard, uh, cruise, but we've made it, we've made it, and it's going well. We still don't have pictures up and different things up, and, and, yeah, we have, we'll have name tags, we'd have the name tags, and, and, uh, I'm thankful that Stacy remembered the flag, you know, I, I knew it was back there, so I didn't realize it wasn't up, so, so thank you, Miss Stacy, and, uh, you know.
And the last thing I got, I know I'm talking too much, but I, I wanna say, um, Fall Festival, my grandson, he's ten, his friend, they're still talking about that festival. And it was one of the best we've had, uh, Jill had her crew in there doing what she does, Mary, you did good at the bathroom door, where they left their, the diapers down the toilet. But it was a very festival thing, and everybody seemed to really enjoy it, and I just wanted to thank everybody, glad anything to do with anything down there.
You know, it has been, it has been probably, I'm estimating four thousand people we had each year, it's, it's something more, we do what we do, then we add to it, and so this year, we had, we had donkeys with chariots. Did you see that? Was that not amazing?
Yeah.
And I mean, you know, so, we've had the new ball court down there, we've got the new playground equipment down there, uh, we've got more new things coming up for next year. Jill, believe it or not, starts on this a year early, so when that one's over, she gives herself a, a week or so break, and she goes right after it again. So, Jill just does a, a man, a fantastic job in getting all this set up and, and going, and, and, and the people that, that, that are rewarded for that, we have the Scottsburg Warrior, that's the Scottsburg cheerleaders, and the Scottsburg, um, football players, all come and run the games. All those games, if those kids come to play, it's free, they don't pay a dollar, they, and every child gets a prize, so, uh, so if you're, if you're knocking over the, the balls, you don't hit any of them, you still get a prize. And, uh, but, but in the, in the silent auction, all that money goes, and they, they divide it up by three ways, so it goes to those kids, so it's a positive thing. Everybody has a good time, and it's just a, it's just a good time, so thank yous for bringing that up. The, the kids love going up seventy feet high in that, in that lift.
Wherever we go tomorrow, I always ask my kids, is it a thumb up or thumb down?
Yeah.
We got thumbs up on that, so.
There you go, there you go.
They love to do playground equipment at Beachwood Park, they really enjoy it, so.
Well, we've already got several things for next year, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of fun next year.
They'll be ready to have fun.
There you go, there you go. Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, I got one thing, real quick, to, to bring up, uh, for you guys to consider, um, I, I've committed to volunteering assistant coaching this year, I'm the head coach for my daughter's basketball team, we got their schedule, and I do have a few conflicts on the Monday games, uh, they start at six, um, whether or not to revisit the meeting time, if five-thirty would be possible.
I'm, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
It works for Mark. Kevin, did you hear that?
Did you get that?
Yeah.
Kevin, what do you think?
What was one that does it to?
To five-thirty?
Josh is having conflict with, uh, basketball again this fall, uh, his game started, his daughter's game started at six, and he was just wondering if we could have our meetings at five-thirty, so maybe he can make it to the games in time.
Okay.
Sounds okay to you, I mean, you don't have a problem with it?
Yeah, it'd be fun.
I make a motion to change it back to five, or change it to five-thirty, that's the split difference.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it, I don't know if they will, but.
Well, there was a couple of.
See your daughter, see your daughter will as well.
People, yeah, people were.
Five-thirty, next meeting. Next meeting.
And, um, we will, we will, you should be able to see the dates and the times for these meetings as well, so, uh, we have been in contact to make sure that that's on our website, it will also be on our, uh, social media sites as well, so thank you, thank you, thank you, so, um.
So, what's she say? There's gonna be a board outside, where they'll have all the notices and stuff, it'll be in concrete. Oh, we see. Meantime.
Will that be at door two, or, um, door city hall board?
It'll be at door one.
Door one, okay.
That's the one facing west, right where you're coming in.
Speaking of other things that's coming in, I, I kinda noticed when I, when I paid my bill, I had a couple of people that had walked in to pay their bill, and I was at drive-through and come with, you know, they stepped out in front of me just as I was pulling off, we have plans on putting some sort of a concave mirror there, where people paying their bill via drive-through can see if there's somebody coming out that.
We, we are.
At that entrance door there, it's kinda bit dangerous.
We are putting, we are putting, not a concave, but it is a mirror like that.
A mirror of some sort?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we are putting that as well.
That is, that is in the planning state, that's part of that.
Because we, we saw that as well, we also have an issue where if I've got more than three cars there, it's gonna stop it up, so we're actually making a bypass around that as well, you know, so, that was kind of a hard thing for me, do we put a drive-in still? You know, because after our generation, you know, it's probably not gonna be used a lot, so, uh, you know, uh, the, the generations coming up is all gonna pay it online, so, but we went in and put it in, it's a lot of money, we can still put it in.
Well. We need it, we need it down here, so, maybe a little longer arm to hit that button too, the call button, it's a little tricky to get to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, uh, you know.
Is there something that can be done with the drive-through, because I've had several people complain it's hard to get to?
I've, I drove there myself, and I pull right up and.
I've had several people.
Yeah.
Say it's hard to get to, and the window's too small.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, um, you know, so, I mean, at this point, no, we pull right up and comes right out, and, and, so.
I've had several people say that it's too hard to get to for them, similarly people.
So, um, I, you know, I was, for my, it just took for my elbow to my hand to get into.
I understand that, but I mean, you got an eighty-year-old lady, makes it a little bit harder moving in.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
So, you know, uh, she's probably not apt to mail it in then, or, or, so, I mean, I don't know what else to do, so, I mean, it's, it's right at the, right at your door height.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, at least when I reached in, it was, it was basically from my elbow to, so, but, and I had about a foot, and I had about a foot away from, from the curb, so, at most times, now she's out there, but, but, because.
Oh, yeah, I understand that, but, I've been, like I say, I've had several people say, well, I shouldn't say several, but I've had some people inquire about something being done differently.
Yeah, I don't know what different we can do, how, how we can do that. There is, there is a, a box outside to the right of that door that you enter, that you can put it in after hours, so we have a twenty-four hour, three sixty-five deposit box there, so you can just put it in there too, so, um, you know, that would require to pull up, get up off, or put it in, but, but, uh, I don't know if I can extend that anymore, just find some type of an extension for them, if it needs to go out further to them, is that what you, you're wanting?
Or they just like, for, be a little bit easier to get to, access when they pull up?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know.
I haven't looked at it, so I'm not sure that we definitely can see.
Just try coming yourself to see, see what it looks like, and that's what I do, so, I, I went, I think I went twice, it is right in the box, so.
The window itself doesn't seem to, it's a call button, you can't reach it, but the window, I have no problem with, or I haven't had a problem with the last couple of times I've used it.
They are ordering the old-fashioned, like, moving gas thing, station demo.
Oh, yeah.
With the car.
I see.
Hopefully someone's already gonna notice the mirror, and they'll have to press a button.
Right. Yeah, I think that is the main thing, there's usually always somebody right there anyhow.
And, and looking in mirror too, it's gonna show that way, so they can look up there and see a car coming in, so.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I meant by concave, I'd mirror along rounded mirrors, where the person coming out could also see if there was a car setting there, I just, I just noticed that when I paid my bill the first time, so, that's, that's not good, it's like, I need some kind of warning system there, for, especially for the driver.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, yeah, we, we did, so we'll get that up, we'll get that. Yeah. What other questions, comments? I'm sorry. Well, again, that's what I'm saying, we're, we're coordinating, Scottsburg's legal council is coordinating, we don't have a date yet.
They'll, they'll do their own remodel, and they'll have their own process, that's the counting.
It's accounting.
So, they're gonna have to go through the same process we've had, but we are going to have, um, a, a time that we can get together and say, well, we're giving them the keys, so they can go after, they can go after whatever they wanna do. We've, you know, the city put a lot of money into that, that facility, but for ADA, to make it ADA compliant, to make it secure, air, all those offices. We've, you know, the city put a lot of money into that, that facility, but for ADA, to make it ADA compliant, to make it secure, air, all those offices are, are, were secure except for utility, and, uh, but, but, uh, yeah, we've put a lot of money in, into it, so, it'd be a great facility for them.
Actually, we won't be handing the keys over there much before the deadline of January one, is that correct?
December seventh is the deadline, according to the contract from last year.
And I think we're, November first is the date that we're.
Shooting for.
We're trying to shoot for that, to be able to give them the keys earlier, so they can get in there and start working before the first of the year, so we're, we're basically two months ahead of our, what we should, that was our last date, so. So, so we should be ready to go, but we'll, we'll make sure it's posted, if it's, you know, if everything's kosher, so.